Mayor, I show 6:00 PM. This is Bill.
My apologies, Bill. There we are, 6:00. Wasn't quite 6:00 here. All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM, April 13th, and will you all rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll begin with roll call, and we'll start with Councilman McGoffin.
President.
Here.
Oh, that's okay. Well, Lavaca, here. Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
And I think we have on line Councilman Allen. I see him. I don't know if he can hear us or not. Okay, we're going to move right into approval of the agenda, and we are adding an executive session. So when looking for the approval, the executive session will be a part of it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the agenda with the executive session added, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through five. Do I have a motion?
Put forward a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Well, tonight, we have a very special presentation. So Cindy Verges is here to present this year's Tulip poster. So Tulip Festival poster. I had trouble getting that one out. I'm sorry, Cindy.
That's quite all right.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
The poster artist that we chose for 2022, he managed to capture, I think, what everybody's feeling right now. Joy. Yay, we made it. We're going forward. And he's created just a bright, fun image. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Debbie. Thank you.
He's created just a bright, fun image that I think just really captures the joy of what people are feeling right now. And I just love that he added a couple of kids twirling in the fields. And it's just, it makes me smile when I look at it. And the artist's name is Jack Gunther, and Jack is from Comeno Island. And he was very excited to be chosen as our 2022 artist, and we're really excited to have him. And if you guys get a chance, come by our office and see the original.
Let me come down and collect.
Wonderful. I'm hoping I can get someone to take a picture. Thank you, Peter. Isn't it fun?
I don't want to be in any.
Actually, it's Siri. Here we go. Ready? Here we go. I was going to take a cup.
This is beautiful. Thank you. We hang them up in our front office.
Wonderful.
All the joy. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we're looking forward to Woodcrest being back next weekend.
Yes.
Yay. And so I'm really, it's really exciting to have our events back and to get all of our communities involved again.
I still agree. Yeah, we're looking forward to it, too.
Yippee. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, that was fun. Moving on to staff reports, and I will begin with Lieutenant Michael Wraith, or is it going to be Chief Tucker? Okay, Chief Tucker.
I'll start off here. I got, and I think Dan's got a couple of things. Real quick, for me, going to be on vacation the next couple of weeks, so I'll be available by email off and on. The little farm I'm on in Missouri doesn't have much cell service where I'm at, so escaping for some vacation. And another thing that came up just today, I had an email from WASPIC, which is the Chiefs and Sheriffs Association that covers all of Washington State, and both Dan and I are members of WASPIC. And one of the statistics they came up with is something that is, you've probably seen a lot about this on the news, and we've posted about it on social media a couple of times. They've seen a 90% increase in auto thefts across the state. This is, this is not something that's just isolated here, but it's across the state. So something to be mindful of. We've seen a few of these, cars left running and people jumping in them and taking off. We've even had a couple where they were occupied by a child and somebody's jumped in. Don't think they were trying to steal a child. They just stole a car that had a kid in it. So something to be thinking about and be mindful of. It's, we're just seeing it across the board. We're seeing the stolen vehicles dumped in town or really missing from town on a regular basis. It's every week. And every other city in the county is experiencing it, so just something to keep in mind. And Dan's going to just mention a little bit about a couple of things, but one of them is the Assessment Center coming up. Some of you may have already heard. We're doing an Assessment Center for our sergeant promotion that'll be coming up later this year. And Dan can talk about that.
Good morning, Council Mayor. So all that really is, is a promotional assessment. We're doing that on 27th of April. That's coming up. I've been prepping for that and getting the scenarios ready for the sergeant candidates. We have six of our candidates testing for that, so it's a pretty good group. I think they're going to do very well and will be very impressed. At least, that's what I expect. So that's what I've been working on for that. Lexi pole policy, I'm ready to, you know, by the end of this month, I'm hoping to push out the tier-one policies for that. So that's going to be new for our department, new policies, new system, easily updated with the new laws that come into effect, and it's more capable for us to update those policies consistently. So this can help us out a lot, and also web-based materials, so they can look it up and view those policies from their phones or their websites. So that's very helpful toward, to us. I don't know. I have some other things about the nuisance ordinance coming up later, so I'll address that later.
All right, thank you. Chief Wagner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Only a few things tonight on the agenda for me. The continuous theme of staffing is still an issue. We're recruiting and trying to reach out to fill our ranks of volunteers and residents. We still have four rooms available down here at Station One for resident folks. The association is doing a testing this Saturday, so we're hoping to get some candidates for that. The big deal will be is if we can get some candidates that are already trained would be perfect. Not sure if that's going to happen in this environment. And wanted to reach out and say thank you to Councilman Burns. He came out and rode with me on my last shift. We had zero calls the entire time he was with us, but I put him to work. We had a windstorm, and we went and stretched a fence of ours down at the training site that the 70 mile an hour winds blew across and went into a neighboring barn, so thank you to him. And of course, right after he left, we continue to have all of our calls from that point on until about 3:00 in the morning. So I wish he was with me and warded off those calls the rest of the evening. And then COVID numbers, the county put out an update this afternoon saying that their numbers are up about 24%, but realistically, if you look at the numbers, we went from averaging about 53 a week to about 57 new cases last week. So not a huge increase in numbers for us, like some of the areas in the rest of the state and the nation are experiencing right now. Zero new deaths, though, which is a good sign, and we're continuing on. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move to our IT Director, Bill Chambers, next.
Good evening, all. Just a few things here. Working on email and network security enhancements with all these increased amount of phishing and other types of attention matter out there. Working on the global policy updates as well for the LAN and the technology policies, updating those. Also, just about done with the AV upgrades in the Skagit Room and Municipal Training Room. And getting prepped for moving the City Scene magazine to the social media only, and that's about it.
All right, thank you. And while we're online, I'm going to go to our Attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Our office has been working on quite a number of ordinances recently, three of which you will see on the agenda this evening. We've also been working on the resolution that adopts a master fee schedule and the ordinance that pulls all of the fees out of the code. I am hopeful that we will be able to have that in front of you for a first-read next meeting. That has been a lot of work, so it's taken a bit longer than anticipated, but I'm hopeful that you'll see that next meeting. Other than that, I don't think I have anything of interest to the group.
All right, thank you, Nikki. And we'll move back to the panel over there, and Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. So this week's largely been taken up with interviewing for the vacant permit tax position and going through that process. Also been spending quite a bit of time working on enforcement of one unpermitted unit in that we've came across. These enforcement things tend to swallow up a lot of time. When you probably understand, when you're asking people to do something they don't want to do, you end up getting a little bit of pushback. So that's been one of the things that I've been spending a bit of time on over the past couple of weeks. Also, I finished up the 2022 annual reporting to OFM for population statistics. Well, actually, I don't report anything about population. I report how many new units we've had and how many people are living in each of our group quarters. And so making those contacts and reviewing our files electronically to determine how many permits, how many new units have come to fruition over the past one year from April 2 of 2021 to April 1 of 2022. And the answer is about 80 units. That translates to roughly 200 additional people in the city over the past year. So I haven't done all the analysis of how many, like what percentage growth that is, but it's a pretty small number compared to what we've been seeing in other jurisdictions, jumping by, you know, typically about 500 in other jurisdictions. So we'll know more not until June or July, when OFM comes out with their official numbers. And that, and, you know, interestingly enough, last year, our OFM numbers estimate, we actually went down by 90 people because the job corps lost a lot of people during COVID. And so we're at the point where, you know, our growth is such that it can be canceled out by the loss of one group home in town is kind of what I'm learning. It's a little surprising. But that's where we're at, and so we should, the number at Job Corps did not go up much this year from last year. It was something like 75 last year and about 100 this year. So, and they max out around 225 or 230. So that's the OFM stuff. You can tell I've been spending a lot of time on that because I have these numbers just floating around in my head. You should see my dreams. Also, I've been prepping for next week's Planning Commission meeting. Will be, it's kind of a big day at the Planning Commission, so there's, we've got all four comp plan items are going to be on there, as well as finishing up the design standards for the Central Business District. So hopefully, the Planning Commission is going to be able to get through all of those items because I've scheduled them pretty heavy, trying to move the comp plan process forward quickly. And we had intended to be done with the design standards on the previous meeting, but they wanted to review it further. So of course, we did. We don't just end it because it's, we didn't end our review just because it's inconvenient. So this next meeting could be a long one. And that's all I have to report for the council tonight.
All right, thank you, John. Finance Director, Debbie Burton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not too much from the finance side. We, too, are in our recruitment. We have an accountant position that we're going to fill, so we're excited about that. Looking at resumes, first review of resumes tomorrow, so that's, or Friday, so that's very good. I'm continuing my work with the Salary Commission, so we meet next week. So we'll continue that good work and have some output to you soon. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. City Administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and Council. Just three items tonight. I'm working on the, well, I have worked on the classification and compensation study after last week's conversation that got reposted on Monday. So that's out there with a deadline of the 22nd of April, so we turn it around as quickly as possible and should get responses back after that deadline, if not sooner. I've had some interest already from several firms. So that's looking encouraging, and then we'll be able to look at those and get back to you at that point. Also, the April 29th Council Strategic Planning Session that we've been working on planning. We have a consultant onboard, Paul Horton. Thank you to Councilor Lavaca for meeting with him last night, providing some input into the agenda. And the Mayor and I and Debbie have met with him as well. He's working on a draft agenda, so we'll have more on that shortly. And the third thing, I just locked my phone. Never do that when you're speaking and you're looking at it for notes, is the YMCA lease. So continue to work on that with Dean Snyder at the YMCA. We're getting closer and closer, and that's a lease to lease out our old library building for use by YMCA for their programs well into the future. So be excited to bring that to you in a meeting, hopefully, in the next few weeks.
All right, thank you. It's kind of a side note there. I did hear from the chamber, and there is a woman who wants to donate a pool table. So I put her in touch with Dean. He can make that decision. All right, thank you. And our Public Works Director, Mark Freiburger. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council. A number of things going on in Public Works right now. The wastewater treatment in Public Works buildings, moving right along. They've actually sheet rocked the Laboratory Operations Building, and that's all muddied and taped, and they have heat in it now, so quite, looks quite a bit like a building now inside as well as outside. The other building has been fully framed, and they're moving well on the whole project. I'll be bringing to you sometime in the next month a couple of large change orders associated with that project, and I just want to kind of bring those to your attention, that they'll be coming your way. We have an opportunity to complete more of the site grading and paving operation down there. You may remember when we were determining budgets for the project and finalizing the financing through the local program, we were uncertain we'd have enough money to complete the yard improvements, and we also talked about the need for the vehicle storage building. We've determined we don't have enough money left to do the building. We'll have to crack that one in the future. But we do have apparently enough money to get the drainage in and the final gravel and the asphalt for at least part of the project site. And that's pretty important for us because we don't want to leave that in a unfinished condition and being tried and try to work out of that, if we can avoid that. And so we have an opportunity, and I have the plans prepared. I haven't reviewed them in detail yet, but I'll do that in the next few days, to move forward with a change order under the existing contract. It's completely within the project scope and within the funding that we have. So I anticipate I'll bring that forward to you within the month. We also, one other thing that we left out of the project was finishing the second floor of the Public Works Operation Building. That's another one that I'm having the engineering done for that, or the rest of the architecture at least. So that will be ready for one of two options. After we negotiate the grading and drainage, there's a possibility we could also change order in for the improvements up above, which both Nathan and Leo would really like to see because that's where their offices are to lie. Right now, they'd be sharing with the lead offices in the first floor of the building. Again, that was cut out for cost purposes. The estimates came in really high when we bid it, and when everything closed, we had more money to work with than we anticipated, and that's a good. So those will be coming your way sometime in the next month or two. Beyond that, the design work is underway for, or tonight on the consent count, you approve the Reichart and Eby Consultant Agreement to begin the design work on the SR9 McGargle and Frutdale, McGargle and John Leiner project. So that'll be, begin apace, and we're expecting that will be designed in time to construct in 2023. The other end of that road, the intersection at Township and Highway 20, we're looking at a mid-June start date on that to begin the construction of the new signal system there. So it's coming right along. And Homestead Park, I should be seeing the final bid design drawings on that shortly. Planning to take a short vacation myself for the last two weeks of April, but when I get back, we'll be looking at that. And we have got all of the permit applications in. There was quite a bit of confusion on the part of RCO regarding our funding source, on who was doing what with the permitting. We had a series of in-face, face-to-face meetings with them, over Zoom at least, and we've got that resolved, and all of the applications are into the core. Unknown right now how long it will take to get the actual permit approval, so we can go to add and bid. Our intention is to do that this summer, but we are at the mercy of the core permit writers at this point on that. So I have some other items on the agenda, and I'll talk about them when we get there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mark. Moving on to Councilmember reports, we'll start with Councilman Owen.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of comments from the community. I think there's a general excitement about these traffic improvement projects that are coming. I've heard from a few people that are looking forward to the right-hand turn lane at the Highway 9 North Township, as well as how we're going to handle the Jones-John Leiner corridor when people see the growth and they have questions about traffic. Being able to tell them that we have a plan in the works is really helpful, and I think there's a general excitement about seeing these come to fruition. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. I don't have much. I just wanted to note for the record that I did receive an email regarding the officer-involved shooting. I understand that this is an ongoing investigation. It is being reviewed, and I'm not able and quite honestly can't make comment on that. My thoughts and prayers go out to everybody involved in the entire situation. But I do want that to be noted for the record, that I did receive that. It was forwarded on, and it is acknowledged and understood what is going on and what is being dealt here. And again, it's being reviewed by a third party and released as information becomes available.
I'm going to be making a comment on it in a minute. Councilman Burns.
I just wanted to thank Chief Wagner for showing me around the fire departments and putting up with me for an afternoon. I guess making your morning maybe easier than taking calls, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I did get a chance to cruise around with Nate on checking out the parks and some of the recreational ideas, and that was very enlightening and very good to see. So I'm excited about the Parks and Recreation Meeting that we'll have coming up in May and seeing that move forward, for sure. There was one other thing. Normally, we'll have time to ask some questions for the people in the council. So I just had a question with maybe Sergeant or Lieutenant Dan, and, because Chief Tucker's not in here. But about two weeks ago, I was going into Rite Aid, and as me and my wife were walking in, an individual was coming out with a shopping cart full of groceries, not groceries, but liquor and other things. In the hustle, he knocked the cart over and ran to a white car with three other people in there, and I had to get the attendant to actually take a picture of that because I didn't even have my phone with me. But he did, and it was a white car with three people in it. And so I stuck around, helped him clean it up, and I thought that the police were going to show up. But he said he wasn't going to call because he didn't want any of the bad publicity on the company or it was, it would make a scene or whatnot. So at that point, I let him know that he does put other people in jeopardy when they don't report that. The guy could have easily gone over to Walgreens or another store. I did notice in Skagit breaking, and I'm not saying they're related. I don't know if they're related. But about a week later, a white car with three people in it were up in Hamilton, and they were stopped with a weapon, and so they ended up getting detained for that. So just the risk out there of what we have, I did talk to the people at Walgreens, and they say that happens often there, too, and they don't report it. And at Rite Aid, they said it happens often there, too, and they don't report it. Now, obviously, there's nothing you can do about what you don't know about, but I'm wondering, what can we do as a community, because I believe the policies are coming down from Olympia. As City Council and a community, we more manage the city things. But obviously, safety, and I'm on the Safety Committee as well, Chuck Owens is the one that is chairing that. But I would love to be able to see what we can do regarding those policies that are coming down from Olympia or realizing how that's coming. It seems like it's party lines almost up there and kind of what we are seeing, even though we're all nonpartisan, of course, are party lines up there for these policies that are coming through. And I just hate to see somebody like my wife get hurt or injured in one of these robberies that takes place and somebody getting frantic or hectic or anybody in the community for that fact. Is there anything that you guys can do, maybe working with the lawyer or working with us, to help protect our community better?
Well, we can inform these businesses that it's best to report crimes. Now, what we can, what we can do is respond and respond to those crimes and enforce as needed. A lot of these stores do have policies in place where they either decide to call or not based on the circumstances. A lot of the stores also have, you know, terms of loss and what's it worth. And sometimes they do report it. We get there and locate a suspect, and they may not want to press charges. There's a lot of factors going into that. We're talking about property crimes, robberies. Generally, they will call us for those type of things if it's a robbery of a store, pharmacy, or cash, that kind of thing. They're going to call us. Thefts is likely a little bit low on their priorities because it's a loss of property, and a lot of times, they probably think they don't want to bother us with that. Now, getting the word out, we're going to respond to those. We can take enforcement action. So say there's a shoplifter, we can, we can. a shoplifter, we can write them a citation for misdemeanor crime, and they can go to court. That's still part of our procedures. The problem, if they don't report it, we do not know about it, and there's not much we can do about that. So if we can get the word out, spread the word, hey, we're still enforcing crimes. Those legislative things, so say they do leave in a car, we can't pursue that. So that's one of the things. If they don't stop for us, we can't keep pursuing. That's one of the things we're dealing with. We have a level of crime we have to determine in order to do that. So.
And that's kind of what I'm wondering. Definitely understand that down on the lower level. But on the upper level, what can we do to work with our officials in Olympia and our state representatives? I mean, we do have, you know, various ones that are very responsive, Keith Wagner and Carolyn Islick. What can we do to help them come up with policies that do make sense for our community or at least have our voice into that? Is there anything that we can work with a lawyer or do, or are we just stuck out in the wind?
No, I think we can always make contact with our legislation representatives and give them input. I mean, that's only a way they're going to know what to fix and hear our voices. So I think that's part of it right there. Now, if they listen, I don't know. But never know unless we talk to them.
Actually, that's a very good point that you're making. And what we have discovered is you do have to stay on top of the representatives. So our representatives from the 39th and from the 40th, being in touch with them, writing letters, making telephone calls, the more they hear from us regarding what our concerns are, if we narrow it down what our concerns are, the more likely we are to get a result from them, that they will actually act on that. So I hear your concern, and it's a valid concern. And certainly, that is something that I think all of us here on the council would be willing to work with you on. And it sounds like you may have connections within the community who have also stated concerns. And certainly, we could give information to them as well. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Dan.
Okay, I see Councilman Allen on the line. Councilman Allen, do you have anything tonight? We cannot hear you. I think you're muted, Glenn.
Now I'm muted.
Nope. Now you're good. Now we hear you.
Okay, okay, sorry. Anyway, no, I'm just enjoying this meeting. I heard the pledge of allegiance, but it was still booting up. So it's a rough 80-some degrees and sunny every day. So that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And then I only have one thing that I am going to read tonight. And actually, as you heard from Councilwoman Diamond, we did receive correspondence from the community members who are concerned about the city's, what they consider the city's lack of comment on the officer-involved shooting on February 16. And while we do understand the desires for answers, we are unfortunately not in a position where we can comment at this time. But I would like to share the following statement that we have put together. "The city's priority is ensuring the integrity of the SMART team's independent investigation. The city and the Segeley Police Department are not and should not be privy to the information that has been gathered or is being gathered by SMART. The city does not yet have the full picture of the incident or what led up to it. Because of this, the city has been unable to provide comment that is in any way helpful to the community. It has properly declined to comment on this pending investigation. When the SMART team completes its investigation, the city will conduct its own investigation of the events using an outside agency that will address any issues identified. While the city understands the commentators' frustration, investigations such as the one being conducted by SMART do and should take a great deal of time. It is in the best interest of the community and all involved to ensure that a complete and unbiased set of facts are developed. Until that time, it would be irresponsible to make decisions or take any actions. The city cannot comment any further on this matter until the SMART investigation has been concluded." And that's all I have for my report tonight. So we will move on to public comments. It is currently 6:33. And if you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address and try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
Do I have to push something to make this work?
The blue light. Is the blue light on?
Yes.
You're good.
Am I audible?
Yeah.
My name is Brendan Marison, 806 Rita Street. I'm the constituent that emailed Representative Diamond. I don't think what you just said was all that difficult to say. I think it easily could have been said during a press conference. That probably should have happened day one of this incident. I don't understand why it's taken so much, why it's taken two months and an email from someone just to, I guess, call out the lack of transparency. And I know that most of your hands are tied on certain aspects, but you can at least acknowledge that this happened, right? That can happen. That's not too difficult. We can do that. Acknowledge it happened. That's the first time, all these city council meetings, that's the first time you've said anything, anything. Your Facebook page, one post about it, and it's to a Ghost Skagit article that you have to pay to read. What are you guys doing? Is this the transparency? Is this how you get trust from the people? I appreciate you bringing it up. It's not with the obvious sentiments that I hold, but it's better than nothing. It's a start. Please continue to keep us updated. And once this is over, ensure us justice. Ensure that justice will be served. I don't understand how someone who, I'm not going to mess up the facts of the case like you just mentioned. I'm not going to be responsible for that. So you do your jobs and keep us involved in situations like this. The public has a right to know. Thank you.
Thank you. In the Herald, I don't know if you get the Herald, but they do, usually on Thursdays, they do release information. And I will tell you quite honestly, what you read in that paper is all we're receiving as well.
Very slanty information from police chief, and that's it.
No, it comes from the SMART team. We're not involved with them. Okay, moving on to, is there any other public comments? I'm looking online here to see if anybody's hands are up.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Am I allowed to make a public comment as a citizen or?
And I'm waiting for the motherfucking man.
Okay. So hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. It is 6:36. And we will move on to new business as we do not have any old business to complete. Up first is the Raze grant funding, and that will be with you, won't it, Mr. Freiberger? Yes.
Indeed, it will.
Yes.
So I spent a fair amount of time working on this over the last two to three weeks. I have to be honest, we don't know at this point if we'll be able to actually make a submittal on it. But on the chance that we will, we are requesting council's approval to submit the application with the funding items that are discussed in the memorandum itself. This is a pretty big one. We tried last for one of these very large grants back in 2009, basically for portions of this same project. We had a consultant do that at that time. I've prepared the grant application this time. And what the purpose for this is, is to construct the major components that are still yet to complete on the Jones-John-Liner corridor project, which Councilmember McLaughlin spoke about a little earlier. This would complete the improvements on John Lainer Road to build a new street with sidewalks and shared-use path on that, to do the new road from Reed Street to SAP with the undercrossing, which is partially done with the pile driving and the bridge decks being bought. And then the improvements on Jones Road down to FNS, as well as the section of the new north trail improvements from FNS grade down to the north end of the Bucko property. From the Bucko property to the south, we have a developers' agreement, which the council has approved to have that designed and constructed by the private developer there. And then at Cook Road itself, we do have the improvements for the Cook and Trail intersection for the existing intersection, which is a necessary part of this. So those five components out of the eight that make up the corridor right now would be funded by this project, by these funds if it is approved. So that's basically what that's about, and I'd be glad to take any questions you have on that.
So are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I have one. So we're applying for the grant, and our cost would be part of that that we would submit, which looks like about 1.24 million, is that correct?
Yes, there's about 1.2 million in city funds in that. Part of that is the money that we've discussed prior for advance acquisition of Rightofway. There's about $600,000 in new money that's proposed as this. And that comes from a combination of our transportation-eligible accounts, mainly from the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund and from Growth Management Act impact fee, transportation impact fee funds. And the balances, you have a memo in the back of this that gives you the layout on how these projects would age over the years as this would be built. And so Charlie and Debbie and I have talked about this extensively, and we're pretty comfortable with it. The funds are there to support this. In fact, there would still be a fairly decent surplus for uncertainties or cost increases or whatever based on this. And I'll say on the estimates, too, I had Reichart and Eby, who was the consultant who did the scoping study back that was published in 2020, I had them update all the estimates for this because of all the uncertainty we've had with COVID and the effects on the supply chain. And so those costs went up significantly, as you can probably imagine. That is reflected in the application that we have here. And we included a 25% contingency on top of that, just looking ahead with what's still going on. So anyway, a lot of these things do involve some intelligent guessing, or maybe not so intelligent. But yes, we think we're in a pretty good position if we can get this funded. Now, I mentioned there's some question about being able to actually submit our application. It's a technical issue. Debbie's been working on it for three months. Charlie's been working tirelessly on it over the last week or so to try to break the logjam. And we still have a few hours yet, and we'll have to submit by 2 o'clock tomorrow to get this in. But basically, it's an approval thing that involved our SAM account, or I don't know what that acronym stands for. But anyway, our federal account that we handle our funds-type issues with the federal government with, and we do have such an account, and we've used it regularly. But with Doug's departure and the transition there, we simply haven't been able to get the administrator function moved over back into our staff. And we've worked with Doug, and it's been a problem. There's been a number of attempts to change that, and it's just gotten down to the wire. And we can't submit until they return that administrator function to us and allow Charlie or Debbie, whoever that function falls under, to authorize me to submit the application. So we are kind of stuck. But we do have another couple of opportunities coming up, one of which is another transportation package coming out of the federal government, and it's called the Infra Program. That one's due on May 23. And it's going to require basically the same paperwork that we just prepared for this one. So nothing is really lost. We'll be able to move forward. I'm going to probably need to get some more support to do the next one. One thing I found out is, as I was working my way through this process, they've got some pretty extensive cost-benefit stuff, which I've taken a crack at, but I need some more professional help on that. So I'll be doing that or getting that arranged here in the next couple of weeks so we're in place for the next one that comes up with a little less nail biting. The other one is the next item on the agenda, and I'll just morph right into that if you don't mind, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Okay. The Raze grant is due tomorrow at 2 o'clock our time, as I mentioned. On Friday, in the council, the county government's wisdom, they've put the economic development grants, they're due on Friday. And so we've put together an application for that, which would provide matching funds. That's part of the, we are hoping will offset some of the local funds that we have dedicated for this project. And so we've applied for half a million dollars in economic development funds. So we'll continue with that, and we're couching that in terms of it's not just the Raze application, it's also for the Infra one and whatever else comes up. And so that one, we've also requested your authorization to submit that application due on Friday.
Okay. And I want to state that you have put a lot of work into this, and especially into the Raze grant, just hours and hours and research. And I want you to be acknowledged for that because this was a lot of work with the possibility, because of the situation with sam.gov, that we may not be able to submit. So, Mark, I just want to thank you for doing that. I want to acknowledge that in front of the council, all the work that you have done. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So before you, I don't know if there's any questions, but we have both Agenda Item 1 and Agenda Item 2. The first is to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freiberger to sign and submit an application through the Federal Raze Grant Funding Program for the Jones-John-Liner Trail Road Corridor Project. It authorizes the use of Transportation Impact Fee, Transportation Benefit District and REIT 1 and 2 funds, as noted for matching funds. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. The second is for the authorization for Public Works Director Mark Freiberger to sign and submit a Skagit County Economic Development Grant application due on the 15th for the Jones-John-Liner Trail Road Corridor Project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council, and thank you again, Mr. Freiberger. All right. Moving on to item number three. This is the possible Addendum 7 to the Professional Services Agreement 2018 PS 25 with Pacific Landscape Architecture for the Memorial Park Improvements Phase. And Mr. Freiberger, you're back on.
Yes. So this is, of course, the culmination of a lot of work that's been done by council to figure out how to fund the memorial and park improvements. And the mayor in particular has been quite adamant about getting this project moving forward. Pacific Landscape Architecture prepared all of the preliminary plans for this project that we've gone through several generations in trying to find something we could afford that we could build out there. And now that we have the ARPA funds that are designated on this, we are ready to go forward with the final design. What the final design will do, of course, is give us the layout for the improvements themselves. Those were outlined in the document that you have before you in the form of the map that was prepared by PLA earlier. It does not necessarily include the spray park itself, but it gets all the infrastructure in place for that. And it will also provide the curbing and the playground area. All of those elements are basically included in it. So we're asking your authorization to add this to PLA's existing landscape architecture design contract, which did include this scope of work as well, so that we can move forward with that. And after they finish the design, we will also have a good engineer's estimate. We had a preliminary one we've been working off of, but we'll need a new one now that we've got all these new material issues to deal with. So that's our request for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I've got one question for you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Do they have any plans to refurbish the monument there and the plaque?
Nothing in that, in this particular project includes doing anything with that, but...
Looks pretty bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, that's a really good question, and I could see the public taking that on, or even one of the service groups. Yeah. Yeah. Especially since it does honor our veterans from World War I and the Spanish War. Yeah. Good suggestion.
Madam Mayor, I was just wondering, Mark, are we pretty hard set on the, on the spray park, on the water park? I was wondering if that, it just seems kind of in Washington State and Cedar Woolley to have a water park and a little back area like that. I just, I've seen them before in other communities. They don't get used a lot in the, in the more damper wintry weather, where it's very little bit of sunshine usually.
Well, of course, I just implement what council design, decides on these things, so I'll, I'll have to leave that with you folks to discuss.
That's what I was wondering, if it's already decided. Sounded like it was something you guys liked. All right.
Actually, this has been in the works for how many years? So it's been through, I don't know how many councils. Yeah.
I heard the idea and I just pictured it in my head, like the rainy days of Washington.
You're not the first to question it. I questioned it when I came on council too. Really? A water park? You know? So other communities do have it, you're right. So, yeah. Okay, so any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger regarding this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes? Councilman Allen, yes?
Okay, thank you. I am with Councilman. Has anyone figured out what maintenance on those parks is? You know, checking with local adjoining towns, I understand they're very expensive to maintain.
Yeah, they can be.
And that would be something we could take into consideration.
And that was also brought up a couple councils ago, actually when I was sitting on the council, and Nathan did explore that. He explored it with both Mount Vernon and Burlington in their water parks. And actually, what he was told is that it wasn't that expensive. So I don't know, has the information changed?
Yeah. Nathan and I have discussed that somewhat, but they are, they are somewhat difficult to maintain if they're, if they're really elaborate. This one's actually been pared down considerably from the first couple go-arounds to where it shouldn't be that big of an issue. And it will be designed to drain and all the rest of that, so we don't have that kind of problem with freezing and things like that. It's, it's a fairly small version of this now, but again, that's still up to, up to your pleasure on that, what we finally design. I would say the way it's laid out, if we did decide not to build one at some point, it would just be folded into the playground and, and the area that's there. So it shouldn't be much of an issue to pivot if we need to at some point.
Okay. Do you have another question, Councilman? Okay. Anyone else? So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll put a motion forward to approve this plan.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, to authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the Amendment Seven to the Professional Services Agreement 2018 PS25 with Pacific Landscape Architecture to increase the contract amount to 244,000, 2,4410, to extend the completion date of 12/31/22. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Again, thank you. Moving on to item four, and I, is, are you taking this Lieutenant McElwraith? I saw an email and I didn't know if that was something.
I think Nikki is going to touch on it and then I can provide some further input.
Perfect, okay. Nikki?
I think Lieutenant passed it back to me. And here I was just trying to share. So the first ordinance that we have this evening that's a collaboration between legal and police department is a repeal of Chapter 8.32, jumping on moving trains. That particular piece of code is quite old. It has not been utilized in 20-plus years. And you can utilize criminal trespass if somebody jumps on a moving train. So it's really an unnecessary piece of code. When we were looking through and doing some other edits and updates, that was one of the ones that the police department suggested removing. And we are happy to accommodate that request. So this is on for a first read, Ordinance 2006-22, repealing Chapter 8.32. And I'm happy to take any questions and I believe Lieutenant is also happy to take any questions.
All right. Do you have anything to add, Lieutenant?
She actually covered most of that, yeah. I think I've written that ticket once in my 20-year career, so it's not necessary. And we have an agreement with Burlington Northern Trains for it to authorize trespass, so that'll work for that, to fill that void.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for either Nikki or Lieutenant? None, okay. This is a first read unless the council wanted to move forward with it. Hearing none, we will see this on our next council, at our next council meeting. So item number five, this is a ordinance, 2007-22, amending Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapters 8.16, nuisance to add provisions related to graffiti and noise. And should I turn this over to Lieutenant Dan?
I will take this one too, Mayor.
Okay.
Lieutenant Dan is also happy to answer questions as well. So this is the second of the collaborations this evening between the police department and legal. We, in, again, in doing updates to the code, we have added in some provisions regarding noise and graffiti. Noise used to be in Title IX, which is the criminal code. It is more properly seated in the nuisance code. There is still the ability to cite as a, as a crime, however, it is more properly housed as a nuisance. And this just essentially replaces and allows the city to do what it used to be able to do under the criminal code. We've also added graffiti provisions at the request both of members of the public or the council and, and the police department. In this section, graffiti is identified as a nuisance and the property owner where the graffiti is located is required to abate the nuisance. If the property owner does not, the city can go in and abate the nuisance, but there are notice requirements and appeal, appeal processes in place. And, you know, this, I think this is an important piece of code because what I'm hearing is that there is more concern about gang tagging and the like. So we want to be proactive about graffiti in the city. Lieutenant, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, this is, this is good for us. I mean, just having a solid process for removal and actual form to provide the homeowner that is a victim. Now, it does allow us for some enforcement capability, but overall, our whole goal is to get it removed as soon as possible so it doesn't reoccur and spread throughout the town. It's kind of an eyesore, correct? So that's, that's our whole goal. And our whole goal is also to work with the homeowner, property owner. We know they're a victim, so we're going to do everything we can to help them out and get that figured out and removed. Working on a potential volunteer program to help out, not solidified yet, but that is a program I'm working on to help the homeowners that can't get it done in a timely fashion.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Dan. Thank you, Nikki. And thank you, Councilman Burns, because you actually did bring this to our attention. Do you have any comments you'd like to make on this or any questions?
I wanted to thank you for working on this, getting something to help us get graffiti removed from the city. And I did actually have a question. There's a lot in this. And I just wanted to make sure, maybe in a year, can we visit to see how this is enforced? How it's working out for you?
Yeah, the primary goal is just have a process, right? So process for the homeowner that decides not to do this and not allow us to help him out or not wanting us to remove it, and just allows us that opportunity. So if we run into that, we can get it removed. So that's very helpful for us. As far as stats-wise, yeah, we can, we can track that. I just, you know, looking real quick, just from 2022, from right now, we've had six calls for service for graffiti. So it's not prevalent, but when it does come, it comes kind of in streaks. And it's, it's best to get it removed as soon as possible so it doesn't spread. For, for noise, if we're going to go in that, that aspect of it, we've had 10 complaints this whole year as far as noise. Generally, those are handled relatively quickly by officers responding, either not finding the noise occurring at the time or contacting the person causing the noise and asking them to stop. That's generally how it's handled most of the time. There are options on there for enforcement. That's not our goal, but it's there for circum, circumstances that may arise.
Okay. I appreciate hearing how you handle it. Thank you very much.
So are there any other comments or questions from the council to either Nikki or Dan?
Hey, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
For, probably for Nikki. So Nikki, the only thing that we're adding in this is Section 81680. And again, 816, I guess, down, 816.80 down to 816160, is that correct?
So we've renumbered them too, is that?
Okay, I see it. 050.
Yeah, so in the newly numbered ordinance, it starts with 050 is graffiti.
So we're not modifying types of nuisances or, or things like that, such as brush or, or bottles?
No.
Or whatever, yeah, that looked like that was in there. So the only other question was that the cost, it looks like it's incurred by the individual if it goes past 15 days in the notice that is sent out to abate graffiti. Do we know what that cost looks like or is that something? Because I mean, if the person doesn't have the money and we're just sticking people with bills, it doesn't seem right for something that happened to them.
So that is a part of why the Lieutenant is looking to form a volunteer group. The enforcement provisions here are more for people who don't want to remove the graffiti from, from their property. And, and this gives us the ability to say, you need to do this. It's, it, it is a public nuisance and this needs, it needs to be done. There's a public health safety reason to do it. So, yes, it, it, my assumption is it's not particularly expensive to go and get some paint to, to put over it or to pressure wash, at least, not from my understanding. This is a pretty common way of dealing with graffiti. We don't reinvent codes, so we would have borrowed this code from another jurisdiction. But I'm certain that there's ways that we can work with the public if they want to work with the city.
Okay, I think Burlington's got something that may be similar to that. It just seems like if we have an excessive amount of graffiti, and based upon that PowerPoint that was put out or that thing, that we have a definition of what those graffiti symbols are that we are looking for, specific gang symbols in certain ways. We're not just going to go to somebody's house and say, hey, we don't like the way that you painted that on your fence or your kid's painted something.
Yeah, that's not the intention.
So is that in the ordinance too, like a definition of what those would be in examples?
So there is a definition of graffiti. It means defacing, damaging, or destroying by spraying of paint or marking of ink, chalk, dye, or other similar substances on public or private buildings, structures, and places.
If I'm reading this, yeah, if I'm reading this correctly, so if somebody, not that we want that at all in the city, but if somebody were to like their kids painted on their fence or something like that, that they wanted, they didn't mind, we're, and it's not gang symbols or anything, but it is necessarily, you know, defacing of their own property. Are we saying that we're, we're pretty much making sure that that is defacing their property, that they don't want it there when we go up and speak with those individuals? Is that correct?
I, I think that inherent in the concept of defacing, damaging, or destroying is that this is unwanted, unwanted markings on the property. It's uninvited and, and not what the property owner invited.
No, that's cool. I just hate to move forward with something that could potentially put somebody else's property or their rights that they have with their property at risk.
Yes, Councilman Kestie.
I just have a question. So these people who are doing this, if they are caught, do they ever have to repaint over it and pay for it themselves or is that?
So that would be, so you could prosecute somebody for tagging or graffiti. It would, it would be prosecuted under malicious mischief, most likely. And then in that situation, the prosecutor could ask for restitution, which could include the cost of the paint or the cost of the labor time to scrub the graffiti off.
Okay, thank you. It's my understanding too, that, that the importance of actually removing the graffiti is so that it doesn't propagate gains. I mean, that's the bottom line here, is it not? That we're not wanting to build a nice place for them to come and do their thing, correct?
Right, because once you get one, you get a rival that goes over it and it goes back and forth and it'll, it'll spread. We don't want it to be like some other cities down south and spreading like that. So I want, I would like to keep our community without graffiti and get rid of it as soon as possible.
So it's really, it comes down to being a safety issue, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. All right, good. Any other questions? All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie.
I'd like to make a motion to make this go through. We don't need to read for it again.
You can do that, all right. We have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And I have a motion by Councilman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Burns. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, council. Thank you, Nikki, for the work you've put into this as well.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing it forward. Okay, one last item tonight before we move into executive session, and that is Ordinance Number 2008-22, adding a collection of delinquency utility accounts provision including write-off of uncollectible debts. Nikki, you're back up.
Oh, I, I thought that we had passed this one off to Debbie. So this.
Nikki, I'm really willing to take it. I assumed, I thought you hadn't, we're not in attendance this evening, so if you'd like to jump in, go right ahead, but I've been willing to take this one.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so this is an ordinance that is not in our current code, so this is a new ordinance. And this is just assists us in the city. Some of the ways we've been trying to do, collect delinquent accounts are very costly and quite honestly, very difficult. And so this just gives us another tool to be able to collect some of our delinquent accounts. So that, that is what this is about this evening. Appreciate any questions you might have for myself or for Nikki.
Are there any questions for Debbie or Nikki? Okay.
Debbie, Councilman Allen, just a question. If you write off someone's utilities, let's say, can they go around and rack them up again? Or, you know, how are we going to control that?
It is true. I mean, that is, that is the case. This would be like the last resort, so we will work as, much as we possibly can with the customers to make sure that we, you know, get the accounts paid. So this is just a very last resort tool. And yes, unfortunately, if they were to move to a different location, we would have this situation again. So that's my understanding. Nikki is, do you have a different understanding?
I don't have a different opinion on that. However, I do think that we could then utilize a different tool than, than perhaps this one. We have other tools in our, in our toolbox, you know, such as lawsuits, liens, things like that. So it may be that we just don't use this process. We use something else.
Thank you, that is true.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
I was just curious. I don't expect you to know the exact number, but roughly, how much do we have in delinquent counts right now?
I knew that was going to be a question and I apologize. So let's make sure this is a first read and I will definitely be bringing, bringing that back to you at the second, because that is an important question.
Sorry, I shouldn't have emailed you that one.
I apologize, that was out of the office, so I will get that number for you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We will bring this back at the next council meeting and we will move now into executive session. This is under RCW 423110I, and this is to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel. And I'm asking Chief Tecker and Lieutenant McElwraith to join us as well. Thank you. We should be back in about 10 minutes. We should be back in about 10 minutes.
Okay, it is seven. I'm gonna do it right here. Let's try this again. Okay, it is 7:40 and we are back in session and there were no decisions made in our executive session. So with that, if there is nothing for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Happy Easter.